Yeah, I've called the meeting to order. Uh, we will be going into executive session to discuss a personnel matter. First, yes.
Personnel.
Um, so I would like to make a motion to go in executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye Michael, goodbye Michael.
Okay, we're on.
So I think we want to increase taxes to the max.
So we'll go through the sheet. Everybody's on the typed up, one-page front and back.
Right.
So these are the large topics I wanna run through. So everybody, Molly wants to increase taxes. Does everybody else want to increase taxes the max?
Yes.
It's forty-one thousand.
Yeah, but what is the percentage we get this year? Cause I saw the school percentage seem to be three-something.
We're getting one point zero zero seven percent for growth. Um, and then one point oh two for levy growth. So in total, it's a little over two percent because the tax base is going up with Butterfield's project.
Okay.
So the board agrees to raise taxes. Chips, right now, winter recovery program is not in the executive budget, never is. Usually at the last minute they put it in, but the responsible thing to do is for us not to put it in until we know for certain. Village-wide product, projects. So in the current municipal fiscal year, we allocated a hundred and ninety-three thousand towards projects throughout the village. We did some of them. A lot of them are gonna keep rolling over, I think, into next year. So for now, as a placeholder, I put a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars out of fund balance into this municipal repairs. I got the one eighty-five because I figured one fifty for the wall and thirty-five for a boiler. If there's any other projects, we can take more out of fund balance and put more into the expense. It's a wash if we're using fund balance for these projects.
Is the one fifty for the entire wall or are there sections that are failing?
From the one stairs to the monument. So it's not the entire wall.
So there's still be one fail that's east of the stairs?
Well, no, it's all the fail. All the ones that are failed is fixing up.
Oh, okay, good. Isn't there one that's east of the stairs?
No. There's two sets of stairs, but the one, but I don't think.
I may be looking at the wrong section, okay.
Well, we're getting rid of that staircase though if we knew it right, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's what the hope is. Cause they said it was okay to people that live there.
Didn't we get, um, bigger quotes for the boiler than thirty-five? The thirty-five?
We got anything between twenty-seven, twenty-eight to, in the forties.
They're all forty, so.
Okay, I thought, some reason I thought it was much bigger, okay.
And then for village hall, I put in an extra fifteen thousand, but that's from operated. That's not from fund balance. Are there any other large projects that the board can think about that should be, come out of fund balance?
Well, I sent you an email. Uh, I responded. Did you see that?
Three thousand.
That's not a big project, but it could lead to something larger, uh, in terms of maintenance, but it's like not a.
So this is the wall between the firehouse and?
And the PCNR building. There's a section out about five feet wide all the way up. The buildings are only this far apart. And mold is coming through the wall into the fire department, uh, through the bricks. So I, I talked to a company that does foundation sealing and stuff, and they're putting a budget together, or estimate rather, to seal that up. But it's really hard to get in there cause the building's only this far apart. So it's difficult, uh, maneuvering in there. But then we're gonna have to deal with the inside of the wall afterward, which I didn't mention. And that, once it stops getting mold through the wall, then that'll have to be cleaned up and painted, that brick wall in there. But still, you're not, you know, it's like a six thousand dollar project at the max, I would think.
The, um, gas pump replacement, um, I knew you have twenty-seven, five was the lowest quote, but Bugsy says, has different companies looked at it? That it's more than just replacing the pumps?
Yep, so other work proposed was fuel, multiple fuel tank replacement, relocation of the tanks and pumps, new concrete pads for the pump and the tanks to sit on, and electrical work, which after reading through the quote, it looks like you would need an outside electrician to complete the electrical work, uh, in addition to whatever the company quoted.
And the estimated quote was five, I think it was close to two hundred thousand, yeah. So, um.
The ninety-three included and includes the twenty-seven for the fuel pump. It's not like, in addition to. And this is just one company?
Right, and he's gonna look for more. Now where would that money come from?
That, that's why it's on here to discuss. If we wanna do all that work, it would have to come out of fund balance. Even just the, the fuel pump replacement. Um, it's a large enough project that it should come out of fund balance.
Supposedly it's a, um, we're against code or something the way it is now, and we could be in trouble. I don't know, you know. I know he was gonna get other people to look at that, so I don't know.
It's a long list, I'm just savage. Things aren't coded.
The current pump is working, right?
They were gonna get new, they started out by going to get new hoses, right?
What happened?
They had a new handle.
New handle.
A new nozzle.
So let me come back. The current pump is, is working, right?
Yes.
And the problem with the current pump is that you have to manually record your, um, the, the reading when you start pumping and when you complete pumping.
Mm-hmm.
And it's gonna cost us a hundred thousand dollars to.
Well, there's a number of things this guy came up with. He came up with all these codes if he's saying need. So one thing that definitely sounds like is needed is a roof over it because right now, all the water comes down and there's a pan for spillage from the oil tanks that fills, and so there is like minimal oil or whatever that goes into this pan, which you're supposed to drain out manually. But when we have the rain, then this thing fills up, and then they open it up, and then.
Those are our parking lot.
It gives all over the parking lot.
At the current time, there is no, no leak in the tank.
Right, yeah. And so I don't know. He's recommended new tanks, but I don't know.
Who's got?
This person.
No, this, this guy who said.
A person, a company, Bugsy had like two or three people come down there and look at it, and it started out as a new, you know, so we could get a new, uh, meter or a new, yeah, meter for pumps. And then this other person came in and said, you know, this is too close to this, this is this, this is that. Then talking to Bugsy, he told me about this whole drainage thing, which definitely sounds like we should do something about that.
So he's gonna get other companies in to see if they're all coming up with at least the same basic?
I don't know. I just know that the one company did a detailed proposal.
Is the, is the tank, the tank is buried, correct?
No.
Oh, it's not?
Above ground.
Oh, okay, well, that's good.
We got, we dug those up.
Bugsy's gonna have to do more research and see what we actually have to do or what is needed. And I don't know who tests tanks, but you know, you know, how this guy sells by looking at it. The tank needs to be replaced.
So for the fund balance stuff, we have a little more time up until adoption because it's a one for one on the revenue on the expense side. It's easier, um, if we wanna allocate more. Street signage, um, has been a topic. Um, I put five thousand in the budget. I don't know how many street signs. Um, it seems like different departments have different wants and wishes on what kind of signage and what to change. So is five thousand a good number just as a, to do some work with?
We have some, he has some money in that line now that he could get signs, I mean, the basic signs if he needs, he can still get before the end of this year, right?
Yes.
So if he may have, we need like one, no parking on this side, signs.
Why would we wanna do that?
No, but I mean, for streets that are in the code, there's no parking, but don't have any signs.
Yeah. That's streets like Garden Street where if, why would you wanna put up a sign that says, don't park on that side? You can't, you park on that side, you stop all the traffic on Garden Street.
No, I understand that, but if somebody who doesn't come from the village decides to park there and somebody, well, this is true. Somebody gives them a ticket and they can fight the ticket, I mean, it's.
They are not gonna park on that side of the road.
I mean, I don't care. The code says there's no parking there and there's no signs that say that, so I think we should put some signs.
Oh, we take it out of the code.
If we take it out of the code, then we let people stop, park there.
It's like Fair Street. You park on the, on the, on other side of Fair Street.
But there are signs saying, there's no parking.
Yep.
Okay, anyway, anyway, he has got some money that he should sort of do.
It'd be interesting to find out how many tickets have been written on those streets that have, I'm serious.
No, I agree.
Because, I mean, the, putting up signs really makes the street look ugly.
But it also.
It's like putting up no parking signs.
It's like putting up no deterrence signs to me.
On, on High Street.
Yeah, but High Street has parking on both sides.
No, no, no. Limited parking. No parking for limited time. We should put those no parking for limited time signs above High Street.
But that's not in the code. That's not in the code. The code says.
So let's waste some more time on this.
Nothing about High Street. Next.
I think we should put them on Grandview too.
Also village-wide, um.
And Academy. I want some on my street. We don't have any signs on my street, right?
No, you do. You do. Uh, as you come off of, um.
Off the very end, yes.
Yes, there are signs.
No parking on top of these big roof things.
Go, Michelle. Michelle wants to go home.
Apparently, there are quite a few manholes in, throughout the village that are raised that when they plow, they have to know to lift the plow because it's, the manhole is raised too high for the plow to just glide over it like it's supposed to. Bugsy is trying a two-pack of, a ring that you heat and it's supposed to grate it out. Some might have to be replaced, like actually with blacktop and grate it that way.
It sounds very expensive.
Yes, so Bugsy was thinking to start and do the rings. It's forty-six hundred for however many rings he needs. I think he said there was like sixty manholes altogether that he wanted repaired. About fifteen of them needed actual, like, blacktop work done. Or even maybe lowering the manhole itself, like from underneath. That's why he's trying these rings. Um, Dave and I asked him for more, so we got a two-pack to try. It hasn't been delivered yet. So I put forty-six hundred in the budget, but that's something that may have to go up, may come out, um, depending on what he finds with this trial. So police and highway, they're both in the general fund, are both requesting vehicles.
Let's go with the police first. Sorry.
I just said eh.
Okay.
No, go ahead.
The police, they are requesting an all-wheel-drive charger, um, fully stocked, ready to drive off the lot, um, would be forty-seven thousand.
With the exception of the, um, top book?
Yes.
The top book would be additional.
Do we have one in, in the car that we're getting rid of?
It's, it, there is one, but it's antiquated and we decided not to update it because it was so old.
It can't be used.
Now are we gonna get stuck with, you know, black and white, white and black?
I'm, I'm not forgetting any of the cars.
Then we just get a new car?
Yeah, I'm not forgetting any of the cars.
Two years ago, so the, in his, historically.
Last year, yeah.
That was a two-year budget, maybe.
For the black and white one.
Yeah, this was my car, man.
I didn't think it's a year old yet.
No.
It was December of eighteen.
Okay.
December of eighteen. We got it for Christmas of two thousand and eighteen, yes.
The blind, the light, and then there were all sorts of delays because we couldn't get it.
Right, we got it a year, yeah.
When do we finish paying that one?
Final payment at that.
Next year. So if the village purchased a second, another police vehicle, you'd have the net, one budget year with two payments. The last payment on the Explorer and the new payment on a new vehicle. The year we bought the Explorer, we doubled up, uh, as well. Otherwise, we try to have one payment per year forever.
How many cars do we have?
Four.
Four.
Why do we need an all-wheel-drive charger?
For the snow.
Yeah, but don't we have an Explorer already?
Sometimes Dunkin' Donuts gets slippery.
That's okay. Can we, can you hold off for another year and have one payment a year instead of?
But we already have an all-wheel-drive car. If we have a Explorer, yeah, we have an Explorer, right?
The Charger we currently have is all-wheel-drive as well.
Oh.
It's not.
Now, that's the problem with it, cause once it snows, that's it. Can't come out.
So you gotta jump in the Explorer if it's snow?
Is that the one we just bought? And it's not all-wheel-drive?
The Charger's not all-wheel-drive?
The Charger's five years old.
It hauls in and stuff.
Yeah, that's good.
Um, so that's, yes, no?
I'm, I'm against it.
Yeah, I'll.
I think we can wait a ye- a year.
I don't understand the priority of it.
Is the, is the, is the twenty-eleven Crown Vic falling apart?
It's the oldest and it's not used as much.
I think, yeah, Naranko uses it.
Yeah.
So instead of alternating between four cars, they're mainly using the three. So every car is running at least eight hours a day.
I think the Tahoe's the one that's probably the most beat up at this point.
I know, I realize that they don't have a lot of mileage, but because they run all the time and then that kinda stuff, they wear off faster, and so I know that. It's like nine years old. It doesn't seem to be a lot. Yeah, I don't know, cause I don't drive them. I know nothing about.
Okay.
I'd like to have one car payment per year per department.
Okay.
I agree.
So then the PBA contract expires in May. Um, I put in a two percent for a placeholder. Is that acceptable? Should I lower it, raise it, keep it?
It's good.
Okay. So then Highway is also requesting a vehicle. They're requesting a replacement of the yellow salt dump truck. It's a six-wheel dump truck. It's a large vehicle. It's not just a regular pickup. Bugsy gave me a quote today, uh, Peterbilt. It's about ninety-seven thousand dollars.
So it's over the eighty you've got in here.
That was just one specked out. He's looking at an international. The international, he said he thinks is gonna come in, um, over ninety. I mean, it's fine, over a hundred and ten.
And that's also a three-year payment?
That one, I haven't been here, last time we purchased, like, a large vehicle, um, so we might be able to extend it. But usually we do three percent on the, three years on a vehicle. Could probably do five.
Yeah, I can check, cause I did, I did the last one with Eddie before he left. I mean, the vehicle he's replacing is like over thirty years old.
Um.
The vehicle needs.
It's used primarily for salting and blacktop.
Which we hardly do. The blacktop question, don't.
And he doesn't wanna plow on it either. He doesn't wanna plow on it. He just wants the sulfur in it.
He said, then how do you feel about, he mentioned buying something used? Since we use it, it's a limited use. We hardly do any blacktop.
I think we'd have to make sure it's a really good vehicle and from a reputable place. I think it would still have to be from a dealer. It can't be from like an auction or something like that.
We can, can we stick it in as a placeholder for the time being? So we do.
Put in like a payment, like a third of the price?
Yeah, yeah.
That works.
Okay. Uh, Highway is also asking for some large equipment.
Sorry, come down to additional full-time employee.
He needs one now?
Yes, he needs one, he needs one now, but this was, I believe, when Joe was still on the, on the payroll. So he was looking for a fifth highway employee. Do we know what that fifth highway employee was going to do?
An extra body to distribute the work to? He didn't have a specific role for that. He just said he needed more help.
Was it because of the time Joe was spending working on the machinery and stuff, or did that have anything to do with it? I don't, I don't, I never asked him that.
I, I think we should be looking for what this other additional full-time employee is going to do before it's approved.
We need to have some kinda job descriptions of who he's gotten, what they're doing.
So tomorrow's the monthly meeting, maybe, um, which often Bugsy, uh, additional questions and about that.
What are we discussing?
The necessities.
No, I know, we're discussing there. Were we actually considering this?
I, I totally have something specific. The answer's no.
Yeah. I mean, unless we, he can spell out very clearly what he needs something for.
Okay, I thought you were going the other way.
No, no, no.
I mean, I'm already baffled tonight. That would really put me over your head.
That's pretty good.
Too much. You're going away, you'll be.
I'm not going, unfortunately.
Oh, yeah?
An automotive lift implies that we have somebody who's gonna be working.
Yes, so there, Bugsy had sent me an email that he would make some budget adjustments.
Okay.
It depends on the person that would replace who left. If you bring in another mechanic, he thinks a lift would still be beneficial. If not, we can scrap the lift or put it off.
Yeah, an automotive lift is like a, that's an air lift or something?
A drawl?
A drawl, yeah. I'm, I'm just thinking of ensuring some implications of putting a guy under a car with a, with a lift. Whether or not that's an issue, I don't know. And do we wanna get that many? If a car needs that much work, but needs to be lifted? I don't, I don't know. I'm not a mechanic.
Well, you can lift it. It makes life a lot easier if you're just greasing the thing, but I'm, I'm not sure we need one.
Okay.
We haven't had one for.
The lift that you need to pick the machines up that we have is not just a normal lift either.
So it, wouldn't it be to lift the garbage trucks? Would it only be to lift the pickups and police vehicles like that?
So at that point, if he's talking about a lift to lift things like police vehicles, we're talking about hiring a mechanic.
A car lift, yeah.
You know, over, cause.
Not necessarily.
No, I know that, but I mean, if he's talking about servicing police vehicles, that's over and above highway. And, you know. So that's sort of, to me, out of the realm of somebody who works in the highway department. I know Joe has done it, and I know Joe was good at it, but I'm not sure that that should come.
I think they were all kinda do oil changes and, and crawl around on the floor.
Whatever.
But they have very superior lighting now, which will allow them to crawl around on the floor.
This is true.
All lighting.
Thanks to you.
Joe had been.
Thanks to us.
Joe had been doing some stuff that, like, they would send the police cars up to, for the water pump recently and things like that, so.
I got another delinquent notice from one.
That's another story. Um, and a tree stump grinder, um, for about sixty-five hundred. It's an attachment onto the log pit. He asked for concrete mixer, but that we're trying to see, looking for it this year. Um, and then he asked for a tree chipper, but we scrapped that idea.
What kind of a concrete mixer? Like, like a big giant one you tow behind?
A tow, a six cubic foot tow.
Oh, wow.
Tree stump grinder, do we have?
I don't think we need the stump grinder either right now. We, I mean, he bars it from the little stamp.
Right.
It's just more, but.
If you have to sub that part out, it's not very expensive. It's, to get them to come in for a day and ride a stump.
No, that's right. He rents it. He does rent it for, he has to rent it for a week.
Nine hundred a week.
Yeah, nine hundred a week.
Nine hundred a week. I mean, how often does he rent it?
One to two weeks a year.
That works. It's cheaper than the normal.
Okay. And then for the third vehicle, water and sewer, requesting replacement, their F-two-fifty, which is a two thousand and three. Matt said that vehicle is, the bottom, you can almost see through the floor. Um, it's pretty old. It's pretty beat up.
Is it, is it only be used for plowing?
It's a utility body also, so the tools, tool storage and things.
And it has on it, um, a crane. I don't know if that's the appropriate word, to lift hydrants or lift pumps and things out of the plant if they need to replace heavy equipment inside the plant.
My, my reaction was, if it was only for a plow, then has the highway, uh, the, the water and sewer. If it has a winch on it.
Does their other, uh, does their other vehicle have a plow?
Lift and plow.
I'm not sure about that.
I would think this plow body is smaller than the highway plows, although I don't know enough.
It's a F-two-fifty, so it's the same.
It's the same one, that's Bugsy's got last.
Yeah, that's same truck.
And they have to plow. They're responsible for plowing. Their, the plant, both are plants, so.
Yeah. They use it, that's for sure.
But why not use, why not have Highway plow the plants?
Cause they plow the streets.
Cause they're going up and down Academy Street every five seconds.
So, so we eliminate one.
That's why we gave them raises, for efficiency.
You know how I felt about that? Uh, so we asked them to eliminate one of the Academy Street runs and do, and do the sewer plant.
Yeah, but if, are they plowing on, um, Fish Creek Road?
I don't know if the vehicle, the vehicle is not just to plow. So the department has to work.
And if there's something going wrong at the water plant and they need to get in there, uh, they need the plow to make it happen or whatever. If there's a storm, uh, the necessity is needed.
We've got how many plows for the highway? Two, three?
Two. I don't know.
So it's gotta be three, four, including the yellow, the bigger truck.
You would think that.
Why don't we put it right up there?
But there's more functionality that they're looking for than just plowing.
And I think, if you're gonna spend the money on a vehicle, it makes sense to add a plow. Not to buy the vehicle for the sole purpose of plowing, but if you're going to purchase a vehicle as a whole, a couple of extra thousand dollars over the three years to have that ability.
I see that.
I agree with that.
And what, how old is the one they replaced in two thousand and three?
Two thousand and three.
That's like, that's like a baby in terms of.
Sixteen years?
Yeah, and the, look at the other ones that, there's a nineteen eighty-seven. That's twenty-three years old.
But he, he did say that you could see through the floor.
They don't make things like they used to.
Actually, what Matt said, it was a Fred Flintstone vehicle. You could like put your feet out and run with it.
That's the expensive repair. So can you get another truck?
So do you want to put in the, the water sewer?
So I think we should put it in, and then we're gonna have to see where we're at.
So that, that'll come out of water and sewer. So the last truck water and sewer purchased was forty-five thousand, so it's, say sixteen a year. That's eight per fund if you split it that way. Um, the other one's store can handle that.
Do they have any vehicles?
No, all their vehi- their other vehicle's been paid off.
What, what is the hatch equipment?
Hoc.
Hach.
Hoc.
Hach.
Hach. So the village owns about sixteen pieces of HOC equipment, um, inside the plant. It could be something that makes the water plant function, or it could be something like a tester outside. So Matt, in his previous positions, has used the service contract. Um, so you pay for the service contract, and if any piece of your equipment goes down, they'll send you out a loaner within twenty-four hours so that whatever's not functioning, you can keep your plant running and whatever. When you replace a part or the entire piece of equipment, they'll give you a twenty-five percent credit back for taking something that doesn't work. Matt thought it would be useful. He said that it usually pays for itself, especially in the down, not having that downtime or not having to struggle to find something to come in and then HOC will repair it. Part of the maintenance contract, they'll also calibrate things for us and perform tune-ups included in the price. I guess it would be like, like a boiler contract you have at your house. Um, you know, they'll service, say, a hundred basic parts and then anything else we have to pay for.
Is this included already in the budget?
It is. Um, but he hasn't gotten a concrete quote yet. Um, he said at his last place, they had more equipment and it was around like eleven or twelve thousand, so he's thinking it would be ten. But that's a big thing for the water, something we've never had, so we wanted to bring it to the board's attention. If that's okay to put in.
Strictly water, or is that what happened?
One piece of equipment is sewer, so we would just keep it strictly water, um, in the water budget.
Sounds logical.
Okay. And then, I don't know if the board want, has any other ideas, if we wanna go line by line in the general fund. If we wanna talk about departments as a whole. I'm not sure what you guys want to do.
I had, I thought I had, I know I sent you a couple of emails today, um, and I thought I had sent another one which for some reason or other didn't seem to go through, so I have a couple of questions. On the parking, uh, let me see. Parking meter fees, you're estimating twenty-three, three, which is higher than what we've been estimating. Do we expect to have more people parking or?
Yes.
It's, uh.
Um, it's, I have two-year average here, but I went back and I took a three-year average.
Okay.
With the exception of the last three, the last three months are two-year average, and then the rest of the year is a three-year average. Um, and that's what it came out to. Um, it's basically seasonality.
And the other one that I wanted, I don't know why you raised it so much, was fines and forfeited va- veil?
So it's mostly just fines, forfeited veils in there, but it's fine.
Why, why are we going up to seventy-five thousand?
Because that's even lower. Because that's even low. Um, we're trending upwards, um, every year.
The guys are writing a lot of tickets.
Four years ago, we were up around seventy-five thousand, maybe five years ago, and then it dipped, and then it's increasingly going back up. Um, we bring in at least ten thousand dollars a month. The lowest month so far this fiscal year was ninety-eight hundred. Um, and then we have to pay about thirty percent back to the state, um, so that's why I raised it so much.
Did you find out about forfeited bail?
I did not, not yet.
I, I saw your question, that Marie, but I thought, we don't get the bail, the bail stays with, in Kathy's accounts, right? Didn't we have this whole discussion about, um, I think you and I and Kathy had a discussion a while ago about what to do, 'cause they want to give us some money that has been sitting, um, forfeited bail money, but they've been sitting in their accounts for years, and you said, no, we can't take it.
They said I wasn't sure.
Right, so pretty much, we don't see the forfeited bail money, right?
And just reacting to the.
Right, the title.
Title. It's fines and forfeited bail, and the question was if.
I'll follow up with Kathy on Wednesday.
The prosecuting attorney we have in.
Yes, so in here, I have him at five hours a court, and that's, you know, once a month. We got a bill today, and he billed us for seven point one hours. So I think five hours is on the low end, I'd probably up it to nine or ten.
How, or, how does it get to seven hours? It's once a month, isn't it?
So it was two point seven hours in-house, physically here, and the rest was prep work. He didn't itemize bill like C N.
So he knows what cases are gonna be coming, and he prefers one, okay.
And it seems like.
Does he make any money for us?
That would be something to direct to officer in charge.
Funny, that was my question.
Hey, don't be so negative.
Yeah, I was, 'cause I was always, since the state required it, if they were gonna give us any spite, you know.
I think depending on what the prosecuting attorney asks for, can go, can move on. Depends on what, how he wants to prosecute, like which case. If he prosecutes lower, I think then that comes to us, the money, or something like that, the way that they could actually direct him.
Strive to break even.
Any other questions?
How would the board like it?
When, when, when you get us some, when, when's the next step? Have you given us the schedule? And I apologize, I don't have.
So a tentative budget has to be prepa- prepared by March twentieth, and that just means it's printed and stamped received by the clerk's office. So we have to go over Water and Sewer and the general fund if we want, or we can, you guys can review it on your own and come back and have another question and answer session, line by line, it's up to you. It has to be adopted by May first, so in staying with the board scheduling meetings, I think it's like April twenty-something, was the last Tuesday. April twenty-eighth would be adoption, so April fourteenth is the public hearing, so the budget should really be done before April fourteenth. But we can make changes up until adoption.
When will we, when will we see the results of what we discussed tonight? I don't wanna push.
Like two days? Um, I have the spreadsheet set up, so it's just a matter of plugging it in, um, and then checking it, so I would think by, by Wednesday night. In the past, we've done every line.
Every line?
That sounds fun.
Tons of fun.
Yeah.
So do you want to adjourn?
Is everyone done?
So what would the next step speed? Does the board wanna set a future time for me to come in to do questions and answers, to go more in-depth? So I know what to plan for.
Are you gonna, so you're gonna send us the tonight's total?
Right. And I'm talking about everything else other than.
What's that?
I'm talking about just in general, everything other than personal services.
So that would be, uh, on Wednesday?
You'll have an email.
Other than personal, I mean, you're not gonna put the salaries?
No, I'm saying like, we have an entire budget here, which we've always done line by line. If we don't wanna do line by line, we should at least meet to discuss some things, so that I would encourage the board to come up with questions, and we could do like a Q and A session. Or I can do a monologue and go line by line.
I like your monologues.
Yeah, I like one.
Do we want to schedule a meeting for the seventeenth, which we don't usually have a meeting for?
Seventeenth?
The same time, is it?
Oh.
Yeah, I'm not Irish, so I just don't know.
Sixteenth?
Week from tonight, what's that?
It's court night.
Court night, right.
Can't do that.
A week from tomorrow, maybe?
That's the seventeenth.
Or this is the seventeenth. So what's the problem? Why do St. Patrick's not?
Can we do it early? And that's, we can't do it early.
Yeah, I might, I might have a problem with that because, uh, uh, my wife's gonna be out of town, so.
We can do, can we do the eighteenth? Is it any better? She's gonna be out of town for a while.
What's that, Wednesday?
Let's.
Pardon me?
Okay, let's do it.
So preliminarily, just speaking, if we, everything that we agreed to or whatever tonight, you can tally that all up fairly quickly and just tell us, are we in budget or not, or are we? I mean, now.
I think we'll be within that fifty-five.
What's that?
We have about fifty-five thousand to spend, so we're, if we put in a highway vehicle that costs a hundred, that's thirty-three, so then that's still twenty-two. Um, I already have the two percent built in, so it's only the above and beyond changes. We should be right about there.
But there were another, a few raises that were, I don't think you have.
But if we take the lift out.
That calculated.
If we take the lift out, that's eighty-five hundred, right there.
Okay.
And stump grinder, right.
So you'll come up with that number first? All right, so just let us know where we're at, and how far away we got, police cars and a police car.
No police car, but.
But that was a good anyway.
A highway will add, and a water and sewer.
So we're just gonna tentatively schedule a meeting for the eighteenth, or just wait until we see another as well?
We can't do the seventeenth?
Yeah, I guess we cancel the seventeenth, that's not, it sounds like, no.
Well, you could do without me, maybe. I'm not sure, I, uh, my wife's in the St. Patrick's Day parade and playing at Carnegie Hall, uh.
Oh, no, you gotta be there, seriously?
Yeah, I've seen it before, no big deal. But, uh, no, but, uh, we got, you know, we got kids out of town, so I don't think anybody can watch it.
When were we having our next, uh, that update review?
We were gonna do the twenty-fifth, 'cause you and I were gonna be out of town, neither one of us are around town.
I'm around now, so.
I'm around too, so.
Love to you guys.
So budget on Wednesday the eighteenth?
Eighteenth, okay.
Seven or seven, seven?
Seven.
Seven.
Homework for the board. Everybody has to come up with at least three questions on the budget, if we're not gonna do line by line. We at least have to have fifteen questions to discuss.
Any questions?
Any questions? Will you send us the budget, remind us, Michelle? That next budget meeting was the sixteenth?
Eighteenth, Wednesday the eighteenth?
Wednesday, thank you.
At seven o'clock.
At seven, thank you.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Great job.